The digital time? We're at 5:30.
Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of May the, I'm sorry, April the 27th, 2015. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a righteous and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or opposition to the item. Please spell your name for us. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and item listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. This is an open meeting night. Before we get started, we have Troop 7 and Troop 36 here from the Boy Scouts who are, I'm sure, trying to get their badge, so we welcome them. And then Theresa, we will go forward with the Board of Equalization.
All right.
So we'll try it again. This meeting is called order. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Law is still posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Each year, the Lincoln City Council passes a number of improvement district ordinances. Today, we are here to equalize the assessments for several such districts. The College View Maintenance District, the Havlock Street Maintenance District, the North 27th Street Maintenance District, the South Street Business Improvement District, and the University Place Maintenance District. The land described in each district is benefited by the improvements in the particular district. The cost to those districts is paid by the city through its special assessment revolving fund. It is then necessary for the city to recoup its costs from the benefited property owners and reimburse its revolving fund. Those costs or assessments are completed, are computed by the Urban Development Department and presented to the City Council for review when sitting as the Board of Equalization, as we are now. The clerk will read a description of the district. After the district's read, a representative from the Urban Development Department will come forward to make a brief statement about the district. Anyone wishing to testify may come forward. Please sign at the podium after completing your testimony. Our first order of business is to elect a chair.
Move that Doug Emery be elected Chair.
Second.
Call or roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Landis. It's yours.
Thank you. Members of the council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director and the applicant in this case. I am capable of speaking on these matters. However, everything I know is because Ron Kane told me, so I thought I'd bring the answer guy with me. We've done an analysis of each of the five BIDs. They do not have uniform changes this year because they are in different circumstances in the, in the cycle of a BID. Several of them are very experienced. North 27th has done this nine times. University Place, seven times. South Street, three times. But College View and Havlock are relatively new. All of them have increases. In three cases, they're modest, 5% or less. Two of them are more significant, and those are College View and Havlock, because we have a maintenance warranty for the first year. In the case of College View, the first two years, in the case of Havlock. And all maintenance is done under that warranty for those periods of time, so the costs are lower. When the warranty is off, the costs come up. So you'll find that there's a bounce in those two, but they ultimately wind up in similar circumstances. And with that, I'd introduce Ron Kane, who does the math and who deals with the public on these matters.
I'm available for any questions you may have regarding the calculation on these assessments.
Questions? Mr. Kane, would this be the time to talk now about the lights at the, the one group of lights on the corner of Havlock and 60th Street, I believe, 61st? Are those back working again now? Okay. Yes, surely may.
When you're in said Urban Development. The lights are working, but there's some globes that we've had problems with. We're working with the manufacturer and working with the local electrical company to find a solution to them. We don't know if it's the design, if it's people breaking that vandalism, but we're working to get those repaired. So I should have been nodding that, yes, the lights are all working, but there's globes missing on two.
I asked for a long time, we had a problem with the
We did, yeah.
The electrical work.
Yep, and that's all been taken care of.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Theresa, I would say you call these one at a time and we'll vote.
All right. College View. One wish to move approval?
So moved. Second.
By John, seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Stop before we go, because I already messed up. Anybody who would like to speak to any of these, I'd let you come forward. Sorry, anybody, if you, we'll let you speak to the, to the College View one too, if you'd like to come forward. Anybody who'd like to come forward? Saved by the bell. Go ahead.
All right.
Move approval of Havlock Street Maintenance Business Improvement District?
Moved by Roy.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next would be North 27th Street.
Move approval of North 27th Street?
Moved by Trent.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Call or roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. South Street?
Second.
Approved by Larryan. Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. And Unit Place?
Move approval.
Moved by Trent.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Call or roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. I just will take a motion to adjourn, signed, I.
Adjourn, signed, I.
Second.
John, seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird? Carried, seven to zero.
Okay, we will return to our regular meeting. First item, when you're ready.
First will be Public Hearing Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 20.
Move by.
Note on Item 1, we did have a request to delay action for one week to May 4th.
Move the delay of an action one week to May 4th, 2015?
Second.
Moved by Trent, seconded by Roy. Discussion? Is anybody here that would like to speak to this item? We will let you, even though we're delaying. Okay. Call or roll, please?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Does anyone else wish to come forward on any of these items?
Anybody who'd like to speak to Items 2 through 20? Staff questions? Okay, call or roll, please?
All right, on Items 1 through 5, these were introduced by Christensen?
So moved.
I'm sorry, 2 through 5.
Seconded by, seconded by Carl. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then on Items 8 through 17, these were introduced by Cook.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then would be our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward. Raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I will call Item 21, which is the request of One Family LLC doing biz, business as El Sultan Lounge at 1637 P Street to close until October 31st, 2015, under hardship status due to their establishment burning down. I did not ask the owners to come forward.
That's fine. Anybody who'd like to discuss this item? Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next would be Item 22. Application of Janelli Sanchez Vargas doing business as Soletto Lino for the addition of a catering license to their Class I liquor license at 100 North 1st Street, Suite 1.
Somebody here to speak to this item?
I had referred, received confirmation she was going to be here, so.
Okay, well, we'll move on. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
All right, next then would be Item 23. Application of McFarland Farm, Family Farms, doing business as Max Creek Winery for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 10 feet by 10 feet at Canopy Street and Q Street on June 6th and the 27th, July 11th and 25th, August 15th and 29th, September 5th, 12th and 26th, and October 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon.
Come right on up, please.
Hi. Thanks for coming. No oath on the SDLs.
I'm Barry McFarland with Max Creek Winery. My family owns the winery in Lexington, Nebraska, and we are applying for SDL for the farmer's market down in the Haymarket.
John?
So you would have one of the standard booths there, and I know we had an applicant, I believe, last week that was maybe something similar, and are you going to fall, can you explain how you're going to do your approach, so that you're, what, keeping the wine sampling within your premises, or?
Right. Three sides of it will have a, a solid side of the tent, and then the front will have a fencing for people to come in, so it's all done within the tented area there.
And out of curiosity, now, you're not doing it every farmer's market, I don't believe, are you?
Can't get here every Saturday. But yes, there are certain Saturdays.
Do you want to say anything about your winery?
We've been open for 15 years. My family owns the winery. My brother's the winemaker. I'm the business manager. We produce about 18,000 gallons of wine a year. And we are from central Nebraska, the Napa Valley of Nebraska, as we like to call it. And we're excited to come to Lincoln to share our wines with Lincoln, Nebraska.
Well, I was privileged to be in Elwood a few weeks ago, and they highlighted all your wines there at their foundation fundraiser, so.
Yes, they did.
I got to taste a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Anybody like to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, seeing none, I would move approval of Items 21 and 23.
Second.
Trent? Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And I would move, we continue Item 22 to next week.
Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And Madam Clerk, may I ask a question? Item 21, do you need anything signed for that?
No, I don't. It's just a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking. Next then would be our public hearing resolutions. Item 24 is accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of April 1st through the 15th, 2015.
Anybody who'd like to speak to a claim, please come forward. Staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next would be our public hearing ordinance's second reading. I will call Items 25, 26, and 27 together. They are approving the Blue Blood Brewing Company redevelopment agreement between the city and Blue Blood Brewing Company relating to the redevelopment of property located at 3235 South 10th Street for construction of a brewery and taproom, including renovation, restoration, and opening of Robber's Cave, amending the fiscal year 1415 CIP to authorize and appropriate $130,000 in TIF funds for the Blue Blood Brewing Company redevelopment project, and authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Blue Blood Brewing Company Robber's Cave project.
David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. If central Nebraska is the Napa Valley of the Midwest, we're perhaps becoming the Milwaukee of the West in that case. We have several home brewery operations, and this is one of them. And they'd like to find a new home at this location, historically significant because this is the area of the Robber's Cave. It's served by a public road this way. There's an attempt to get a permanent easement to use this road, which is a private road. The land itself is scruff land, for the most part, with volunteer trees and a rather difficult topography for construction. However, there is a design that overcomes those objections. This is the site plan for that operation, and here's the building and the attendant parking that's necessary for the location. This is a artist's rendering of what the building would do or look like. It has the, it harks back to an agricultural setting, an agricultural look, both in the building and, of course, in the silo itself. Probably the only thing that can be seen from the, this is a 12,000 square foot structure. There is the prospect of the cave being open and available for public events, which is of value to the city as it's part of the identity of the city and the, and the history. The total amount of the project is recited in the redevelopment agreement. The amount of the TIF is $130,000, and the total money is, as I recall, I think, a million seven, from several different sources. The bond counsel is available to answer questions about the bond, should you wish to do so. This was recently before you, as we had the redevelopment plan amendment just several weeks ago as all. So, two is the developer. He's present and will be happy to answer your questions. And in bringing you this matter, when we did the redevelopment plan amendment, the administration was saying, "We believe this meets the statutory requirements." And when we voted on that action, there was essentially the finding of those were there. However, if you'd like to ask the developer the necessity and importance of TIF in his structure, I'm sure Brian would be willing and able to answer those questions. May I remind you or reiterate anything about this project that you have new questions about, or remind you of what we talked about a couple of weeks ago? Anything that comes to mind?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this question is best answered by you or Mr. Podwinski, but in, in his current location, he's come to us on occasion for special events, and, and I'm assuming that that will continue in the new location. So what, what kind of parking capacity is there at this location? And then for those events, is that adequate to handle than these?
Well, I can recite that this is the parking area, and it meets the standards that are necessitated by a project of this size. There is, the only other thing I can think of as far as parking related is that the entrance here, and that goes to a public street, is also the entrance here to the Van Dorn Park area, and there is a significant parking lot for, I'm going to guess, 120 cars at this location. It would be a bit of a walk. It's not on-site, but it is within easy walking distance.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Dave. The TIF funds will be used for site acquisition, and you mentioned that this property has significance to the city. Could you speak to the agreement's provisions about protecting public access and making sure that that is something that's enforceable in the agreement?
There is, let me see if I can find it. It is part of our reason for doing this as a city, that Robber's Cave be available for not continuous public use, but on occasion, public use. And that is recited in the agreement, but it'll take me a moment to sit down, and perhaps upon a moment, I'll be able to recite the language to you.
Page 11, I think.
Well, then, let's look at page 11 together. Redevelopers should take all necessary steps to renovate and restore Robber's Cave and open it to the public as part of its business operations on the project's site. Renovation and restoration of the cave shall include, but not be limited to, installation of permanent lighting and ventilation systems throughout the cave. Redeveloper may secure any outside entrance to the cave so as to prevent access to the cave except as achieved through the redeveloper's business. The Robber's Cave shall be made available, and the word there is "shall," shall be made available for public tours and private events. It shall not be used solely as storage for redevelopers' business operations, although it is intended for those very business operations, for cooling and storage of the beer. If for any reason the cave must be temporarily closed to perform required repairs or maintenance for a period longer than seven days, redevelopers shall, shall provide written notice of said closure to the city for at least seven days prior to the closure. A redevelopment agreement is a contract, and a redeevelper in so reciting that is making a promise to do that. And to the extent that a redevelopment agreement was violated, we would have the rights under that contract to act in accordance to our rights. And having recited it in that way, it's not optional. It says it shall be.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody who'd like to speak to this item, please come forward.
Good afternoon, evening, whatever.
Please state your name, please. Please state your name. I know you're new at this. Please state your name.
Oh, God. Austin? That good enough?
Absolutely.
Okay, ready?
Yes, sir.
I knew the lady that owned this property. She owned all that down there where the elevator was and everything. Her name was Esther Scarborough. Real nice lady. And I'm glad to see this thing that they're going to redevelop it, because it was a pretty nice place at one time. And I dug a lot of sand just north of there, that sandstone. It's all around town underneath these, underneath these slabs where the filling stations are. So that's about all I got to say, but one more thing, maybe if they made a deal with equity down there to use their parking lot, you know, after hours, it'd probably be possible.
Okay.
Parking becomes a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item?
Hi, Brian Podwinski with Blue Blood Brewing Company. Address is 9322 South 28th. First of all, I want to address a few things with you. First, as the but-for test for TIF. I want to make sure it's understood that without TIF funding on this project, it will not go forward at Robber's Cave. Multiple reasons. First of all, we've worked with our bank, making sure that this is viable with that TIF funding. However, without it, we will not receive support from our current lender. Also, the other side of it is, is this property does present several challenges, and every time we have another meeting, it seems like there's another one. So with that being said, the TIF support is actually helping this product going, project going forward here, because with that cave and some other issues, it would not be feasible without some sort of TIF support. Plus, we can remove a blighted property from the city, clean it up, because right now it is, albeit behind some buildings, kind of an eyesore, so we can really get this thing going again and get it back on the tax rolls. That's our goal behind this, and I just wanted to make sure it was clear that we could not do this without TIF. Okay? As for that, I think we've talked about this project several times. We feel it's a very good project for us to bring it back to the city. We're prepared and want to honor the agreement with the TIF, with the redevelopment agreement, to make sure that people do have access for it for different events, and we'll make sure we take care of that cave as best we can. So, any questions?
Any questions? Carl?
Yeah, just the, the parking issue that Mr. Landis answered. Any additional words on that?
For the parking, like, like Mr. Landis said, we do have enough stalls for our certain, for our location. However, we are looking at the possibility of another part, another piece of the property actually being able to add up to another 32 stalls. So we're working on that, but that could be a funding thing as well. We'll see how that turns out. But our number of SDLs will reduce, will shrink, because right now, we have a taproom that holds 40 people, and the new place will hold 117, is what the current projections are. So that'll reduce the need for SDLs in the future. Most of our stuff will be able to be held indoors, as well as the outdoor area, which we will apply for as part of our liquor license, for an outdoor seating area as well.
Okay.
So we should be covered there.
Great. Very good. Any other questions? Carl.
And again, is this going to be a developer purchase bond?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Come forward, please. State your name, please.
Name is Sam Manzito. I live at 3400 South Hope Court, Lincoln, Nebraska. I am the general contractor for the Robber's Cave Blue Blood Project. I've been working with Brian and Dave Johnson now for about three months on the project. We, in the development of the site, we have, as Brian has mentioned, the site has some challenges with a 20-foot-plus drop from east to west. That's, that's a real challenge for us. We think we've figured out a way to get through that, get past that. Plus, it's, it has grain elevators on two sides, you know, which aren't real attractive, but they're there. It's been mentioned that the, that we have been in the cave three times, I think three times now in the past couple of months, for inspections. We've had different people in there, structural engineers and everything. The project is perfect, I think, for that location. I mean, I think it's a good fit for the, for the piece of ground, for the use of the ground, and hopefully it'll encourage more redevelopment in the area. And like Brian has mentioned, the plan is for that cave to be an active part of this project. It needs to be reopened to the public again. It's been closed a long time. It is, as people have mentioned, it is a time capsule. It's covered with thousands of carvings, and we found, I think, three that date back to the 1800s with names on them, so. And it is my first.
It's John's.
Yeah, I think so. It is our first project in Lincoln that has a cave located on it, so. Questions?
Which seems a little ironic, as we talk about what the surrounding area. If you're in a cave, I don't know if you know what's around you anyway. I understand that part of it's going to be above and appearance-wise. John.
Mr. Manzito, I noticed that there are impact fees, about $35,554. Do you know what those break down to be on the various categories?
I do not, no. I haven't seen the actual breakdown yet for impact fees, so.
Can you see if we can get Dave or somebody to send that out?
Yeah, maybe just do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Their public hearing, we can move into the voting session.
Please do.
All right. Item 24 is the report of claims against the city for April 1st through the 15th. This was introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
We have a.
To amend?
Do we not have an amendment?
Yes, motion to amend, number one.
Somebody want to move that?
Motion to amend, number one.
What is it?
Here.
Oh, is that?
Oh, okay.
And the reason for this is to, for approval of mediated litigation settlement by the city council.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Trent. It is, it is an addendum that settles one of those that had, was still pending. Any?
Discussion?
Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Public hearing ordinance, second reading, are items 25 through 27. Vacation 14010, vacating the east-west alley between O Street and N Street, from the west line of 23rd Street to the east line of the Antelope Creek Channel, introduced by Camp.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 29 is text amendment 15002, amending section 27.63.200 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to clubs to delete the setback requirement and repealing section 27.63.200 of the Lincoln Municipal Code as hitherto existing, introduced by Camp.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 30 is amending chapter 12.08 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to parks, general rules and regulations, by amending section 12.08.070 unlawful to be in park after hours to specify that a violation of that section shall be an infraction, and amending section 12.08.340 to specify that a violation of any provision of Title 12 or any rule or regulation adopted pursuant to Title 12 shall be a misdemeanor unless otherwise specifically provided, introduced by Camp.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Trent. Jonathan?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I don't know, you know, the important thing in any criminal history is, when it comes to employers, is whether the employer takes a careful look at it, because it isn't always whether something's classified as an infraction or a misdemeanor. It may be the violation itself that needs to be looked at. There may be misdemeanors that are fairly minor and infractions that an employer might find more significant, especially for particular jobs. So it's, we hope that that's what's, that's what employers will do, that they will understand the issues behind the violations, rather than just looking at whether it's a misdemeanor or an infraction. But I understand the issue here, just trying to change the classification. I don't think there's any harm in that. I think, though, that there's one thing that's in this that I actually think is a valuable addition to the penalty section, which should have been there before, which is adding, for which a penalty is not otherwise specifically provided. It turns out elsewhere in Title 12, there are references, like for parking, that say that there are other penalties than misdemeanors. But you look in this last section on penalty, doesn't reference that. And so if you just read this, you'd think everything is a misdemeanor, when in fact, not everything in that title is a misdemeanor. So I'm glad to have that added as a clarification along with this change.
I appreciate Jeff Kirkpatrick and the City Law Department looking at this for me. This is a constituent issue that came up, that somebody had been in park after hours and got cited with a misdemeanor, and it shows up on their, on their criminal history report and something that an employer asked him about. And so I appreciate my colleagues looking at this, and, you know, just, just one of those things that you bring forward and hope it's a good idea, and I hope this one is.
Any other remarks?
Well, I appreciate you bringing it forward. I, I get a little nervous when we start changing things, because there's usually an unintended consequence that somebody never thought about. In this case, while I, I think it's, it's unfortunate that this has trailed your constituent over the years, maybe the lesson ought to be that you have to think about those kinds of things when you're 16, 17, 18 years old. What seems like a really wonderful idea at that time may trail you for the rest of your life. And frankly, 18, 17, 16, 17, 18-year-olds ought to be smart enough to read the sign that says, "You can't be in this park after dark." So I'm going to vote for it, but at some point, people have to be responsible for their own actions, too.
Call or roll, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 31 is change of zone 15007, application of MNW Holdings for a change from R3 Residential and B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District to R4 Residential at North 14th and Indigo Road, introduced by Camp.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Well, this one concerns me a little bit, because we do have traffic issues there already, and I am concerned about the rather circuitous route that you have to go to get into this, this property, these properties, simply because there's no access off of 14th Street. However, there are lots of things, there are lots of these, these types of dwellings out there. It's also property that we've tried to use otherwise, and it, I'm not sure what else we would do if we don't use this to put it on the tax rolls and make it valuable. So I'm hoping that they'll be able to work through those traffic problems.
Call or roll, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 32, change of zone 15008, application of IGIR Corporation for a change from AG Agricultural District and AGR Agricultural Residential District to B5 Planned Regional Business District on property at South 84th and Pine Lake Road, introduced by Camp.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next is item 33, use permit 140E, application of IGIR Corporation to expand the boundary of the existing use permit by approximately 17 acres to allow an automated car wash and an approximately 210,000-square-foot freestanding superstore at South 84th and Pine Lake Road, introduced by Camp.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Call or roll?
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Any other questions? Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Their public hearing, we can move into the voting session.
Please do.
All right. Item 24 is the report of claims against the city for April 1st through the 15th. This was introduced by Christensen.
So moved. Second.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I don't know, you know, the important thing in any criminal history is, when it comes to employers, is whether the employer takes a careful look at it, because it isn't always whether something's classified as an infraction or a misdemeanor. It may be the violation itself that needs to be looked at. There may be misdemeanors that are fairly minor and infractions that an employer might find more significant, especially for particular jobs. So it's, we hope that, that that's what's, that's what employers will do, that they will understand the issues behind the violations, rather than just looking at whether it's a misdemeanor or an infraction. But I understand the issue here, just trying to change the classification. I don't think there's any harm in that. I think, though, that there's one thing that's in this that I actually think is a valuable addition to the penalty section, which should have been there before, which is adding, for which a penalty is not otherwise specifically provided. It turns out elsewhere in Title 12, there are references, like for parking, that say that there are other penalties than misdemeanors. But you look in this last section on penalty, doesn't reference that. And so if you just read this, you'd think everything is a misdemeanor, when in fact, not everything in that title is a misdemeanor. So I'm glad to have that added as a clarification along with this change.
I appreciate Jeff Kirkpatrick and the City Law Department looking at this for me. This is a constituent issue that came up, that somebody had been in park after hours and got cited with a misdemeanor, and it shows up on their, on their criminal history report and something that an employer asked him about. And so I appreciate my colleagues looking at this, and, you know, just, just one of those things that you bring forward and hope it's a good idea, and I hope this one is.
Any other remarks?
Well, I appreciate you bringing it forward. I, I get a little nervous when we start changing things, because there's usually an unintended consequence that somebody never thought about. In this case, while I, I think it's, it's unfortunate that this has trailed your constituent over the years, maybe the lesson ought to be that you have to think about those kinds of things when you're 16, 17, 18 years old. What seems like a really wonderful idea at that time may trail you for the rest of your life. And frankly, 18, 17, 16, 17, 18-year-olds ought to be smart enough to read the sign that says, "You can't be in this park after dark." So I'm going to vote for it, but at some point, people have to be responsible for their own actions, too.
Call or roll, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 31 is change of zone 15007, application of MNW Holdings for a change from R3 Residential and B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District to R4 Residential at North 14th and Indigo Road, introduced by Camp.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Well, this one concerns me a little bit, because we do have traffic issues there already, and I am concerned about the rather circuitous route that you have to go to get into this, this property, these properties, simply because there's no access off of 14th Street. However, there are lots of things, there are lots of these, these types of dwellings out there. It's also property that we've tried to use otherwise, and it, I'm not sure what else we would do if we don't use this to put it on the tax rolls and make it valuable. So I'm hoping that they'll be able to work through those traffic problems.
Call or roll, please.
Cook?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Bellers?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Any other questions? Anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Next item, please.
Their public hearing, we can move into the voting session.
Please do.
All right. Item 24 is the report of claims against the city for April 1st through the 15th. This was introduced by Christensen.
Any other questions? 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 Any other questions?